Okay.
Okay. Like to call to order the 1,094th meeting of the President and Board of Trustees from Machesney Park on the sixth day of April 2020. Pursuant to the executive order COVID-19 Executive Order Number Five, Governor Prechter has suspended certain rules of Open Meeting Act, specifically that members of the public body must be physically present. Therefore, the Village Board has chosen to conduct its upcoming meetings remotely. This evening, we have invocation by Trustee Aaron Wilson and pledge allegiance by Trustee Terry Bailey.
Aaron, you're muted.
Let's all bow our heads. Gracious God, we know that your love is infinite and that you care about all areas of our life. In this time of insecurity, help us to trust that all of our security is in you. Keep us mindful that you will always have and always will provide for our needs. Apart from you, we can do nothing. Merciful God, we ask that you give our leaders the wisdom to guide our nation and the world out of this current crisis. Help us to protect all those who are struggling during this difficult time. Provide for their needs and give them hope. Open new opportunities for them and furnish the resources they need to live dignity. Encourage those who have enough to share essential resources, those who lack the necessities of life, and do so with humble, grateful, and loving hearts. We ask this through Christ our Lord. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag.
In the United States of America. And to the republic.
For which it stands.
And one nation.
Station.
Under God.
Indivisible.
With liberty and justice.
Will clerk please take roll call?
Mayor Johnson.
Here.
Trustee Sykes.
Here.
Schmidt.
Here.
Kid.
Here.
Wilson.
Eric.
Bailey.
Here.
Beck.
Muted.
Beck. Clerk is present, the attorney is present.
We have a quorum. I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the March 16th Board meeting.
So made.
Second.
Most than a second. Are there any corrections or additions? Hearing none? All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Minutes have been approved. Next, we have the treasurer's report from Treasurer Bradley Robison.
Thank you, Your Honor. I apologize for my screen background going a little crazy. The treasurer's report as of March 31st, 2020 reflected what the village received in motorfield tax funds of $72,309 and Bill Machesney Road Funds of $369,617.21. Total of all funds was $14,375,257.94. Thank you, Your Honor.
You. Got a emotion?
So made.
In a second to approve this. Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Treasurer's report has been approved. Next, we have the communications from Clerk Laurie Mitchell.
Thank you, Your Honor. A couple of things this evening. First of all, Mayor Johnson has issued a proclamation for Child Abuse Prevention Month. This proclamation will be mailed to the Department of Children and Family Services in recognition of this important program in our region. Also Hannah Pereira, our student liaison, has left a report with me for this evening. He reported that Harlem High School has begun their official e-learning experience beginning last Wednesday. And the public was offered the opportunity to address the board prior to the vote on an agenda item this evening. And we have two comments that I'd like to read for you. First one is from Shelley Sheffield on Pine Al Drive. Due to the nature of the COVID-19 being a respiratory virus, it is dangerous, it is a dangerous time to allow burning leaves. The fact that COVID-19 can be deadly as it eliminates life safety for the people who have high-risk health problems such as asthma and COPD. Burning leaves creates allergy attacks that is preventable by not burning leaves. Smoke coming from the leaves burning induces migraines to ones who already suffer from migraines. Please consider the health of everyone involved and be informed this leaf burning during COVID-19 most likely will make the vulnerable sick and possibly die. Ban the burn. Save our health. Save the environment from toxins and bag mulch or have your leaves vacuumed. Save yourself and your neighbor. Be well. The second comment is from Curtis Sheffield on Pine Al Drive. And he says ban leaf burning indefinitely in Machesney Park. And those were all the comments that we received prior to the vote this evening. There will be another opportunity for the public to speak during public comment as well. That's all, Your Honor.
Thank you so much. Next, we have the warrants. Trustee Jake Schmidt.
Thank you, Your Honor. This evening I present the warrant in the amount of $518,904.25 and will make a motion for their patent.
Second.
In a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, will the clerk please take roll call?
Trustee Sykes.
Aye.
Kid.
Aye.
Kid.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Bailey.
Aye.
Beck.
Raise your hand, Eric.
Six ayes and no nays.
Those have been approved. Next on the administrative, uh, next on the agenda is administrative reports. First of all, since we've had a meeting three weeks ago, the COVID-19 situation has become a pandemic. The Governor of Illinois has extended the stay-at-home order until April 30th. Ninety essential businesses have closed with the stay-at-home order. Residents are asked to shelter in place and practice social distancing and frequent hand washing. These are unprecedented times that we are living in. I never thought I would ever see something like this in my lifetime. I'm a practicing pharmacist working at the front line almost every day. This weekend was a very sobering experience for me. Saturday afternoon, I filled my first COVID contact, COVID cocktail, as I call it, but at the end of the day, I filled 10 more. On Sunday night, just before closing, another seven scripts came in that needed immediate addressing. It is a very humbling moment when the scripts come across my computer. This virus is no joke and the medication is not a magic cure by any means. In fact, this combination can be very dangerous to people with heart issues. But as now, we have. But as of now, this is all we have to try and fight, fight it with. We, as a community, need to heed the warnings and do what we need to do for our families and residents to keep them safe. People with breathing, breathing issues such as asthma, COPD, heart issues, et cetera, and older adults over 65 can develop worsening, worsening conditions every, uh, which is very, very life-threatening with this COVID-19. On Sunday afternoon, Dr. John Mueller dropped off this letter, which I want to share with the board. I will read this at this time for the benefit of the people at home and I'll email a copy to all the trustees and village staff this letter. This is from Dr. John Mueller. Dear Mayor Johnson, I appreciate the work. You. I appreciate the work that you and the Machesney Park Board does for our community. I'm requesting an immediate ban of leaf burning in Machesney Park this month to be enacted at our own, at our own meeting on Monday, April 6th due to the harm it may do to our health in the COVID-19 pandemic. As you know, I'm recently retired family, uh, practice physician who practiced in the tri-city area since 1988 and live in Machesney Park. I am greatly disappointed that the electorials did not pass the referendum to burn leaves last year. In my 32 years of practice, I care for many people with allergies, asthma, COPD, and have significant breathing problems where on oxygen and many eventually had early deaths from their illnesses. The greatest cause of the cigarette smoke, side stream exposure to cigarettes, smoke exposure, even if they did not smoke, and other environmental exposures including smoke of any kind. This includes leaf burning. My wife, a lifetime non-smoker, has allergy, asthma, COPD. The last two from side stream smoke. During the leaf burning months, she often cannot go outside, essentially stays in home for two months as per year. My biggest concern right now is the possibility of brush fires and leaf burning. This is completely preventable. Several weeks ago, I witnessed two homes and two garages that burned the ground off Montague Lane in Roscoe. At this point, I counted over 15 emergency vehicles, fire trucks, tankers, police vehicles, ambulance. Fortunately, there were no injuries. With this COVID-19 pandemic possibly reaching a peak in the next two weeks locally, and my guess that this will stay in place for through June or July. Is urgently needed that the leaf burning be avoided if possible? We desperately need these vehicles from first responders to answer to medical calls at this time and in the next several months. We cannot overwhelm our hospitals or first responders. Our local hospitals have already numerous COVID-19 patients in ICUs and ventilators. If we do not use this, more people will die. Leaf burning is totally unnecessary. Leaves can be shredded, compost, bagged. It is traditional, it is a tragedy that this tradition disregards the health of our neighbors. It could lead to fires and it would delay medical care and continue with deaths due to the COVID-19 exposure. I would urge Machesney Park to ban leaf burning immediately for the current month of April and consider banning it for this fall also. Thank you for your consideration. Sincerely, Dr. John H. Mueller. That's all I have for administrative parts. Next would be continuing with Attorney Tom Green.
Thank you. No report, Your Honor.
Thank you. Next would be Village Administrator Tim Savage.
Thank you, Your Honor. Very quickly, I would like to follow up on my report from two weeks ago that the village continues to participate in the coordinated response countywide for the pandemic, joining with the County Health Department and other municipalities as well as the county itself in addressing the needs and concerns and regulations that are put in place in response to the pandemic. So we participate on a daily basis with the phone-in calls and also have discussions regularly with the County Board Chairman. In addition to that, I would note that the Village Hall is in full operation. Our lobby is open, although we ask that residents conduct as much business as possible through telephone and online. And if they do come in to the Village Hall, that they sanitize properly and do everything they can while out in public to maintain distance when they enter the Village Hall. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Next would be Finance and Human Resource Report, please.
The report this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Next would be Community Development Report, please.
Thank you. I'll be giving this on behalf of the Community Development Department and James Richter. Last Wednesday, April 1st, the village had planned to host an open house regarding the Rock River Parks and Open Space Recreation Plan or actually Open Space Plan. Due to the COVID-19 response, the open house will be rescheduled to a later date. Instead, the staff did host a brief Facebook Live event and received a number of good questions and feedback during the, during the event. We will let you know when we plan to reschedule the open house. Next, the Destination Machesney Gift Card Program is going well. As of 3:00 PM, we had reached over 24,000 area consumers and nearly 500 people had actively participated. Our goal is to support the residents and local businesses with this campaign and we're pleased so far with the positive response that we've received. We've also published a list of our local residents and social, on social media and through the Destination Machesney Park Forum. This information includes their hours of operation and delivery pickup options. We've sent over 300 letters to Machesney Park Business Representatives with information on local, state, federal assistance programs to help them during the COVID-19 crisis. Many of the businesses have applied for these resources and we're providing as much assistance as we can to identify the resources and help them apply. Our website contains up-to-date information regarding all of these programs. And finally, please support our local residents as often as you can because they definitely know, need our business and support during these challenging times. Thank you.
Thank you. Next would be Public Works Report, please.
I'll be giving the Public Works Report as well. The Rock River Disposal Company has temporarily suspended its pickup of bulk and loose items in its weekly garbage pickup. Residents are asked to refrain from placing items to the curb that are loose and not bagged and also bulk items unless they have been placed in the Rock River-supplied bins, garbage cans, or totes. Rock River Disposal will update us regularly and we will inform residents through our normal means as to when the bulk pickup process will resume. Rock River Disposal has started its weekly yard waste pickup as of Friday, April 3rd. Residents are reminded to place any yard waste items in brown paper bags or in a can marked with an X. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Next would be Village Engineer Report.
There will be no report from the engineer. He did give a report at the ANF meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Next would be Public Safety Report.
Thank you, Your Honor. Last month, the Winnebago County Sheriff's Department, Machesney Park Division made 35 arrests. 11 warrants were served, 144 traffic citations issued, and contacts with citizens equaled 861. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Next would be Committee and Trustee Reports. Does any trustee have a report this evening? Trustee Wilson.
Thank you, Your Honor. The Planning and Economic Development Committee met this evening and we have one ordinance. It's zero dash seven, or I'm sorry, seven dash two zero that will be going to the April 20th Board Meeting with positive recommendation. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Trustee Kid.
Thank you, Your Honor. I like to remind everybody to feel out their senses as I'm driving around, talking to my citizens from a safe distance. I'm honoring your request to talk to my district and doing the census. And also, there's a fire today off of Waterview, I believe, or Victory. Prayers for that family. I know the, according to the witnesses that I talked to and my friends that the fire started in the garage, so, uh, please let that family be in our prayers. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Trustee Smith.
Thank you, Your Honor. This evening, the Administration and Finance Committee met. We have two resolutions going to the April 20th Board Meeting and two resolutions that will be on tonight all with positive recommendations from the committee. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Does anybody else have a report? Seeing no one. Next would be Consent Agenda. Would the staff present all items to be considered on the consent agenda?
We have Item A, Ordinance 1120, authorizing the budget amendment for fiscal year 2019. Twenty, first reading. Item B, Ordinance 1220, adopting annual budget for the fiscal year 2021, first reading. Item C, Ordinance 820, adopting the official zoning map for the village, final reading. Item D, Ordinance 1020, disposal of surplus property no longer necessarily to the operation of the village, final reading. Item E, Resolution 20R20, approving an economic development incentive agreement. Item F, Resolution 21R20, authorization to bid the Hawksview Platte Number One and Platte Number Two road improvements. Item G, Resolution 20R20, authorization for the Illinois 251 Forest Hill Road pavement repairs. Item F, Resolution 25R20, continuing to impose a non-home rule municipal retailers occupation tax and non-home rule service occupation tax. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Are there any items a trustee would like to move from the consent agenda to be considered separately? Trustee Kid.
Thank you, Your Honor. Um, I would like Letter B, Ordinance 12 dash 20, adopting the annual budget. I have a couple of questions that I just want to clarify. Thank you.
And which one again, the trustee kid?
Item, Letter B.
E, thank you.
B is in void.
B is in void. Okay, got it. Thank you. Ordinance 2020, correct?
1220, Your Honor.
Or 1220, I'm sorry. Okay. Okay, item. Ordinance 12. Ordinance 2020, adopting annual budget for fiscal 2020, 21, first reading will be removed consent agenda and considered under unfinished business.
Your Honor, that's 1220?
Uh, 1220, I'm sorry. 1220. Any other ones to be considered? Okay. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So made.
Second.
Good motion, second. Will the clerk please take roll call?
Trustee Smith.
Aye.
Kid.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Bailey.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Sykes.
Aye.
Mayor Johnson.
Aye.
Seven ayes and no nays.
Consent agenda has been approved. Uh, next we'll have unfinished business, which would be Ordinance 1220, correct? Adopting annual budget for fiscal 2020, 21, first reading. Entertain a motion for approval.
So made.
Second.
In a motion and a second, may I have staff report, please?
Thank you. I will defer to trustee Kid with his question.
Sure, thank you. I have, uh, three questions, I guess, sir. Question number one, $17,600 was for the insurance. That's something new on the, uh, on the budget from the past. I was just wondering, why was that allocated for health insurance for the mayor and Laura? I'm sorry, Clerk Mitchell, as you were.
Yeah, so, um, as you know, we have comprehensive healthcare for all of the employees that are, of course, working for the village. The village ordinance spells out specifically that there are two positions entitled to receive healthcare if they elect to take that and those positions are, of course, the elected clerk and the elected mayor positions. In the past, uh, through years, the mayor elected not to take that health insurance and this year he is electing to take it. So we have, of course, uh, accommodated that in the line item for health insurance.
Okay, thank you. My next question is the police contract. Um, is the police contract a month-to-month contract or is it going to be a 12-month contract with the police contract? It looks like we budgeted for 12 months, but I just want to make sure it's either, are we going to be concrete on that or, or do something else in the future?
The police budget, I'm assuming you're talking about the current, not, not budget, the contract, I'm sorry, that's currently in place. Is that the one you're asking about?
I am with the dollar amount, yes. So is that a, that's a 12-month uh, number that we're giving the police or is it? Or is that divided up? Is there any room for manipulation in there? I just want to make sure it's good for 12 months.
The, um, the police contract historically has been, um, an annual contract. At least the, the budgetary portion or the monetary portion of that contract. It obviously, as, as all the features of the contract typically have stayed in place longer than that by way of, um, if, if a modification is needed, they would have to give us a 24-month notice of anything significant. However, every year, um, we receive their estimates, their payroll increases, our estimates of capital expenditures, plug those all into a, an annual number and then we pay them on a monthly basis. So the number you see there is the number that we're estimating will be the annual cost of the police services contract.
Thank you. And my next question is about the utility tax. Um, it looks like from my understanding, and I just want to be clarified because, um, I could be wrong. Are we using the utility tax for investments or, or roads? Or both?
Anytime there are unutilized funds, uh, because the project is perhaps underway, the revenue has come in, but money has not been spent. Of course, we invest that money and try to, to gain the greatest interest return we can on that. You wouldn't want to park it and simply, um, not get any investment return on it. So the, if, on an annual basis, we have that money building up waiting for a project. We don't spend, um, how, you know, in advance in anticipation of money. So typically, yes, there is a balance that is building up and that money is invested waiting to be spent.
Okay, thank you. I, uh, I will carry that information over to the person that had the question. Um, thank you.
Any further discussions from anyone? Hearing none, will the clerk please take roll call?
Trustee Smith.
Aye.
Kid.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Bailey.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Sykes.
Aye.
Mayor Johnson.
Aye.
Seven ayes and no nays.
Ordinance 1220 has passed for first reading. Uh, next would be new business. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance 1320, suspend, suspending burning of yard waste and recreational fires. First and final reading.
So made.
Second. Motion. Do we have a second?
It was seconded by trustee Schmidt.
Thank you. May I have staff report, please?
Certainly. So we have. Certainly. So we have had, uh, a number of requests come into the village hall, um, and questions, uh, about yard waste burning. Uh, that was scheduled to start, which has started effectively, um, uh, May first. To that and the concerns that have been expressed, we put together an ordinance, uh, a very comprehensive ordinance covering, of course, all burning. Um, and, uh, extending it until the next, um, uh, burn cycle that would occur, uh, beyond April, the one that begins, uh, November first. And that's what you have in front of you at this time. Um, we're hearing, uh, some of the, uh, the feedback that we've been getting at this time, we'd like to propose that, uh, we strike section two fourteen point, uh, any reference to fourteen point four oh three, which would have suspended recreational burning. In effect, um, the ordinance would then read that that the, uh, the burning during the month of, uh, April of yard waste would effectively be prohibited. Thank you, your honor.
And I know we have further discussions. Uh, trustee Schmidt.
Thank you, your honor. Um, I'm glad to see that recreational burning was stricken from that. I think that's a reasonable request. Um, spoke to a few of you on this. Um, I also think it would be reasonable to make an effective date of Monday. Uh, the concern being enforcing a currently lawful act immediately with no grace period. Um, and allowing residents to be able to wrap those projects up and having it be effective on Monday is my proposal. So I'd like to make a motion to add an effective date of Monday, April thirteenth to this.
Could you include in that motion the striking of section two?
I will make a motion to strike section two and add an effective date of yard waste burning of Monday, April thirteenth.
Good, uh, good, uh, attorney, can we get those two, uh, two motions separated? Sure, you can do them separate or together.
Amendments.
Sure. But we'll need a motion to strike section two.
I would like to make a book, okay? Second, right?
Wait, let's slow down. We have a motion made by trustee Smith. Uh, why don't we, uh, back out of that motion? If you withdraw that motion, we'll start over. And we'll start with a motion to strike number, uh, section two. So is that all right, trustee Schmidt?
Yes, sir.
Whoever seconded that, is that all right with you?
Yes, sir.
So first, first, let's entertain a motion to strike section two of this ordinance and then we'll change um, three to two, four to three, and five to four. Please make that motion.
Okay, entertain a motion to amend that striking section two. Um, so looking burning for recreational burning.
So made.
Second.
Jake did that.
Yes.
Any further discussion?
No.
Trustee side.
Trustee side. Any further discussion? Uh, trustee kid.
Sure, I just would like to share some information. Uh, and I, and I'm, you know, I, I have some college education. Uh, I would like to think I do have some common sense, though. Uh, so I would like to start off with the N ninety-five masks from three M. Um, November thirteenth, two thousand eighteen, in Chico, California, with the wildfires two years ago, the American Red Cross was issuing out for free the N ninety-five, uh, masks for smoke. Um, that's on YouTube. You can look at the interview. Uh, the person's name is Mr. Halibat, Halliburton. And, uh, I found it to be an interesting, uh, video that I found online. Also, while reading online, uh, I find it to be uniquely similar that for the coronavirus, uh, the government, the CDC is requesting the N ninety-five masks to help prevent the coronavirus, which help prevents smoking uh, from leaf burning. Um, I also have not found yet on the CDC website where, um, recreational fires, leaf burning, anything, uh, to that effect was recommended by the federal government to stop and make sure that no burning occurs. I would also like to say, once you're inside your house from wearing your mask, um, your furnace filter is another line uh, that helps you prevent hit smelling the outside smokes. I know at my house, I don't smell outdoor smoke um, through my windows, through my furnace filter, through all those other things. Um, I also like to point out that I've had a heart attack. Um, and my son is an asthmatic and who has, uh, breathing treatments. I also would like to share some other information, um, that I think it's important that sixty-five percent of our, our the Machesney Park voters, um, voted for leaf burning. And when I did a very, very short time, uh, questionnaire on, on the internet, um, the, the votes were about the same. And I know that some of my friends are going to be upset with me, but I don't think we should be banning the leaf burning. Uh, because it's, I don't see the correlation with the government. I don't see where the government is issuing the N ninety-five or not issuing, uh, requesting citizens to wear these masks that the smoke will affect, uh, myself, my son, um, or any other citizen. So I'll be voting no for this ordinance or present, one of the two, but I think with the technology that's there, um, and another thing, I have, uh, I've talked to the firefighters, I talked to the lieutenants, yeah, for Harlem Rosco. I've talked to a couple of the under former fighter fighters on Mr. Blackmer. Um, they cannot recall a structure fire, uh, but one in the last ten years. Uh, and that's up in Rosco. And I asked them, could they think of anything longer than ten years? And they said no for leaf burning and, uh, recreational fires. So I just think, I, I, I know, uh, many of my friends will be upset with me for not voting yes for, for the ban. So I'm just sharing the information with us that the, the science is there, the technology is there, that the government has not banned or requested citizens not to leaf burn, um, on the CDC. Um, so I'm just sharing my information. Uh, I do appreciate everybody's time and thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, we have a sub motion pending. It may be appropriate to take care of that sub motion, which was to remove recreational burning.
Okay.
And move on to more general comment. And I think we have another mo- motion that trustee Schmidt's gonna present. And then once we get those things cleaned up, we can talk more generally and globally about the
Okay.
about the ordinance.
So entertain a motion to approve.
We have a motion pending.
A motion.
Move section two. We just need to vote on that.
Okay.
Is that amendment to the main motion?
Okay. Please take real call.
Trustee kid.
Present.
Wilson.
I.
Bailey.
So to be clear, I'm voting on to remove recreational from this, correct?
Correct. Beck.
I.
Sykes.
I.
Smith.
I.
Mayor Johnson.
I.
Six eyes, no nays, one present.
Okay, so the recreational line two has been stricken from the, uh, uh, burning yard, burning of yard waste.
I think there was another, I think there was interest in another amendment.
Do we have, yeah. The Schmidt.
Thank you, your honor. Yeah, I would like to make another proposal to this. Um, I certainly understand trustee kid's remarks and I share similar sentiment with the sixty-five percent vote. Um, I also think we're in uncharted territory right now with the COVID and I know there's no direct connection now, but what does it look like a few weeks from now? So I think, uh, a reasonable compromise is to bribe a one week window to wrap up these burning habits completed by Monday and not take something currently lawful and enforce it now. So, um, I'd like to side with the folks concerned with COVID and the burning. I think that's a reasonable request. It eliminates three weeks of burning. While at the same time, for the pro burning folks, they get a one week notice period to wrap up these projects. So I'd like to make a motion to, uh, delay the effectiveness date of suspension of leaf burning to Monday, April thirteenth.
And Laura and I, if I might, Laura and I spoke about this. So after the word suspended in section one, we will add, beginning April thirteenth, twenty twenty, period. Strike the word and, and then the next sentence in that same section will be thereafter, no open burning of yard waste shall be allowed until November first, twenty twenty. Yeah, that's, that's the amendment.
That aligns with my proposal.
Trustee.
Do we get a second on that?
Get a second.
Second.
Second trustee sites, trustee kids.
Uh, thank you, your honor. So I just want to make sure I understand this. We're gonna concentrate everybody's leaf burning when the majority of the citizens are off of work in a one week period, which would concentrate all, all leaf burning done in one week. Or is it better to have it spread out? So there's not a huge concentration of overbearing smoke for, for seven days period? Or is it better to lessen, uh, the Machesney Park smoke where sections are being burned? Or do we do area sec or leaf burning for district one, district two, district three to, uh, dissipate the smoke? I, I'm just brainstorming out here. It does not make sense to me if these people, uh, to include myself and my son, um, uh, are gonna have a concentrated effect of leaf burning smoke in one week over thirty days. I'm just brainstorming, or is it better for the month of third, uh, April thirteenth, we have sections one and two, or districts one and two. For the second week of April, we'll have three and four. I, I don't know, but I'm brainstorming. I would like your guys' opinion.
Uh, trustee sites.
Yeah, I mean, I agree with both forms there. I mean, my question is gonna be is either way we do this, I mean, James has got a good idea. I know I've talked with Jake and his, it's a great idea. How are we gonna inform this to people and get this out? Uh, how are we gonna do that? And a lot of people don't look at our Facebook, you know, the, the villages Facebook page. They don't look at this. How are we gonna get it out there to the people? So everyone knows and on the same page.
Uh, trustee kid.
I don't have the best answer. However, one way we can do it, and I'll volunteer myself, is driving around in district one and two for the next week and saying, hey, district one and two, please, please burn in April thirteenth week. Uh, districts three or four, burn and, and I'll drive around now. I, I have no problems educating but via my trucks, from my vehicles, making up signs on my own to educate. However, that's, that's, that, that's work, but I don't mind. The other thing is, I don't have all the right answers. None of us do. But collectively, we can brainstorm and is there a better solution? Is there, uh, you know, do we do a TV commercial on the, you know, the, the evening news? Um, and for the next week saying, hey, no leaf burning, but these districts on these dates, please comply because of the Corona nineteen. Uh, whatever. Most people agree if there's a compromise to leaf burning that's better than one week, we should explore it. I don't have your answers.
Uh, trustee Bailey.
So my question is, say we ban it after the thirteenth, what happens to the people that don't know that it's banned after the thirteenth? Are you planning on fining them? What? I don't understand what your plans are, um, to stop them from burning. Myself personally, I live with two people that have asthma, that have allergies, and the people that I've talked to in my district voted for burning both times and would like to continue burning. They don't burn every single day, but some of these people, that's their only way of getting rid of leaves.
Well, I'd be happy to address the question if I could, mayor.
Yep.
Our typical enforcement is, eh, the first time is a warning. If there is someone that's, that's, uh, returned in for, uh, burning, making a lot of smoke with leaves, uh, we issue a warning. If they don't adhere to it, there's a potential at that time for a fine.
Trustee Smith.
Yeah, I would just say James' idea seems reasonable, too. If we had something like that, I just think we're limited with time, but I think it's a reasonable suggestion, absolutely. Um, my thought with the, the thirteenth, not saying it's the right thing to do or what we have to do. My thought was spring leaves are typically lesser than fall leaves, and I don't know that there'd be so much of a concentration of burning that would be that alarming in a week. Maybe I'm wrong. Um, but I agree with Terry. There's a significant number of folks in my district that burning is their only choice. They're near Schoonmaker. They've got tens, twenties, thirties of trees in their backyard. They're down on Ventura, a hundred yards from the road where they can't haul everything up. I'm trying to think of those folks. I just don't see how there's gonna be an overwhelming concentration over the next week. And to me, that was just a compromise to say we're gonna eliminate some time for burning to appease both sides. But if there's a better solution somebody else has, I'm open to that, absolutely. That was just my thought process for the April thirteenth day. Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, yeah, yes, trustee Beck.
Uh, you know, people right now in, 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 in my district anywhere are, are mine that we allow April burning. And, and, and they're gonna start, they're gonna start burning. So I can see where Jake has got a very good, uh, 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 solution to allow a one week, uh, uh, moratorium on a ban and, and then put it in effect. And I, I could support that.
Thank you. Uh, anybody else? Uh, trustee Bailey? No? Okay.
Sorry, I was fixing my mute.
That's all right. No, no, I just didn't want to miss anybody. Uh, trustee Sykes.
So I guess the question is, are we gonna vote on Jake's? And that's the vote we're gonna take? Uh, just more open for more discussion? Anybody else has any suggestions? Which one are we looking at? Uh, Mr. Kids?
The motion on the floor, the sub motion.
We have a pending motion.
Trustee Wilson.
A case in point, we've spent a great deal of time discussing this this evening and for good reason. Um, it's been brought to our attention by numerous residents in the village. And we need to act as a board and do something about it. We are in trying times right now. We've had a letter from a doctor who practiced for thirty plus years that the mayor read for us. And I think Jake has really taken a leadership role in this. He's come up with some great ideas. And we have to act in a very short period of time. We need to make decisions tonight. Maybe they'll be the wrong decisions. Hopefully, we're making the best decision so we can move forward from this again in a very cram packed time period. So I am behind Jake in giving it the rest of the week and then bringing it to an end on the thirteenth for just this April twenty twenty. And if we end up revisiting it again for November, we do. But we do need to act tonight and we need to act quickly.
Great. Thank you, trustee Wilson. Anyone else? Hearing none, we're gonna vote on, uh, Jake's.
Right.
This is the sub motion to make the effective date April thirteenth.
Okay, so clerk, could you please take a roll call?
Trustee Wilson.
I.
Bailey.
I.
Beck.
I.
Sykes.
I.
Smith.
I.
Kid.
I'll, I'll say yes. I'll say I.
Mayor Johnson.
I.
So we have seven eyes and no nays on this one. So now we will combine them all into the main motion.
Okay, now you just need a vote on the main motion or more discussion on the main motion.
Okay, so entertain a motion.
You have a motion.
You have a motion.
You have a motion.
It's been amended.
Okay, or have discussion and vote on it.
Any further discussion on, uh, the two amendments?
Not on the two amendments, on the main motion as amended.
The motion as amended.
As amended. Okay, any, any discussion? Trustee kid.
Uh, I, I just have a question for the rest of the trustees. Uh, you can email me your answer. But did anybody look into, uh, the N ninety-five masks and how much, uh, smoke it, it already filters out in, in, in the germs? Um, it just, I just think, uh, sixty-five percent of the people voted yes. Uh, the masks are there to, uh, you know, to help people breathe and avoid germs. We have furnace filters, we have everything. I, again, I have not seen anything on, on the CDC webpage that contradicts or that says that leaf burning causes. And I just, I just have not seen anything. So thank you, your honor.
Thank you. Trustee Wilson, please.
I just want to reiterate, make sure we're clear here. Again, we are not voting tonight to take away recreational burning or leaf burning after April 2020. We are doing this as a one time stipulation to suspend burning of leaves because we're in an active situation right now with COVID-19 and folks who have respiratory problems. We've had a ton of people reach out to us to do this. We have a meeting tonight. Next meeting isn't till April 20th. I just want to say again, we need to act on this.
Correct. Trustee kid.
Thank you. This question's for Tom. Attorney Green. Do we have to? Is this legal, even though the citizens voted on this? What, what is the, if a citizen says, hey, I'm gonna take you guys to court. I have a million dollars in my pocket. What is the legal ramification for us voting on this to disallow during the pandemic?
This is absolutely legal. We have an ordinance on the books that bans burning for, that does not, that allows burning, I should say, in the month of April and in the month of November. You amend an ordinance by another ordinance. And so that is what we are doing. We're passing an ordinance providing for this amendment. The board has the right to do that. No one has a constitutional right to continue to burn. We have the right to limit that. Many communities simply ban it altogether. The referendum you referenced was an advisory referendum, advisory referendum only is not binding upon the board. So this is a, an amendment to our ordinance to suspend it for, as it's written now, the last two plus weeks of April. That's what the impact of this would be. And my opinion, it's 100% enforcement.
Thank you. I have, I have one more question.
Okay, trustee kid.
My next question is, what am I going to tell the citizens? And, and I've talked to Jake about this. For the, the, the four or five citizens that I talked to who said, all right, since you're not leaf burning, then I want my chickens, I don't have to go to the grocery store anymore, to be prevented from the COVID-19. Is that a valid argument with the rest of the trustees? Or should I just tell them tough? I'm, I'm asking for your opinion. I'm asking for your advice because in my opinion, if somebody doesn't want to go to the grocery store because they're fearful of collecting COVID-19 and they want chickens to lay their, or hens to lay their eggs, are we going to omit this during the duration of COVID-19? I'm just sharing the information, I guess.
Anything further? Uh, trustee sites.
Thank you, your honor. I just want to say that anybody that is watching this, anybody in our, our citizens of Machesney Park, this is unprecedented territory with this coronavirus. Aaron made a great comment. You know, we need to do this and do it tonight. We did it. It's set in, it's set now what we could do. You know, it, the burning is gonna stop the 13th. I just think all of the, all of us, our citizens, everybody needs to look out for their neighbors in this time of need. You know, it's gonna be inconvenience, yes, but we just need to look out for each other in this village and in this country. You know, we need to start looking out after people and just get through this. It's gonna come to an end and everything go back to normal. But you know, let's just pray that this ends soon. Thank you.
Yep. Okay, trustee Wilson.
The line has been, we're all in this together. And sometimes you have to compromise. This is one of those times where not everybody's gonna get their way. And again, I want to reiterate, we're not taking away leaf burning forever. This is a one time deal here, hopefully for April 2020.
Absolutely. So it's a temporary only. So let's, could I have a clerk, please call roll?
Okay, this is the motion as amended permitting recreational burning by removing that section and making the effective date April 13th. Trustee Bailey.
I.
Beck.
I.
Sykes.
I.
Smith.
I.
Kid.
I.
Wilson.
I.
Mayor Johnson.
I.
Seven eyes, no nays.
So ordinance 1320 has passed for final reading as amended. Next, we would go to public comment.
Mayor. We have not had any requests for public comment during this portion of the meeting, which this time is usually set aside for members of the audience who would like to address the committee for the good of the village. And we have received no written public comments for the meeting. So individuals are now given one minute to call in with a comment. And we will wait that one minute.
And the phone lines are open. Thank you.
Good call.
On WVMP.
I kinda wanna call it. I, I don't know. This is the third meeting. I kinda wanna call the number and just see what happens.
Attorney Green, I almost did during the last one.
I just, I, but I'm, I'm not gonna.
Call and ask us what we're having for dinner.
Oh, we've got a spare minute here of dead air. I, I did want to address the, the N95 masks that have come up here three times in the meeting. The CDC was very clear that what they are recommending are cloth masks to be worn by residents. N95 masks are in extreme shortage right now. They are the only masks that protect healthcare workers and first responders from, you know, in the best of cases, protect them from the virus. So the availability is extremely tight. That was not the recommendation from the CDC. To my knowledge, fire departments and hospitals are having a very hard time even obtaining them. So at this time, what we do know is that cloth masks are recommended by the CDC. Thank you.
Sure, I, I would like to respond to Tim's question or statement there, if I could, please, your honor.
Yes, sure.
Uh, sure. So though the N95 masks are in short demand, the majority of people that have asthma have, have, they already have them in stock. The reason why the government is going through the cloth masks is because of the shortage in healthcare. Healthcare. So the N95 is preferred. However, the second best is a cloth made mask. However, the majority of people that have asthma, or I should say, some people that have asthma breathing problems already have them and have a small stockpile because they know that April and November is burn season. So I'd just like to share that information with Tim.
Okay, well, you had asked before about obtaining those.
We got the minute? We're good?
Think we're good.
Okay. Next, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
It's all made.
A motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Oh, trustee.
I'm saying goodbye.
Okay, bye. All in favor, say, aye, we're, we're good. Thank you.
Aye.
Thank you guys. You so much. Stay safe. Thank you so much. Thank you, guys.
Good night.
Good night.
Bye bye.